Well, welcome. Welcome to the public session of the Richland Two Board of Trustees. We met at 5:30 and went into executive session at that time. And we will be going back into executive session after this, after the public meeting tonight. At this time, we're going to stand and have a moment of silence, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. And let's remember those that are having trouble with their snow tonight, and the people in California, and let's just remember all those in need tonight. Let's bow our heads. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
See you. Do I hear approval of the agenda?
Second.
Ms. Manning? Ms. Anderson, second? Any discussion? Item five, I mean, passed six to zero. Miss Specter did let me know that she may not be here. She was out of town working today and could not return. Next, we have item number five, our Consent Agenda, which is approval of the minutes from the previous meeting, the budget update, student remittances request, a student admission request into the Adult Education Program, and ratification of personnel. That's on our consent agenda tonight. Do I hear a motion?
Still move, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brill? Any discussion of items on that? I hear that passes six to zero. Student Learning Report, Dr. Broschew.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. At this time, I'll call on Sue Mallett, our Chief Academic Officer, to introduce our program.
Thank you, Dr. Broschew. Tonight, we're delighted to have the opportunity to highlight our National Board Certified Teachers for the first time, as well as those who are renewed. And I'm going to turn it over at this point to Michelle Taylor Brown.
Good evening. The National Board Certification process is designed to recognize accomplished teachers who meet high and rigorous standards. Because of the process and the rigor, it can take up to three years to complete the process. The National Board Certification process is based upon five core propositions that help educators link teaching practices to teaching standards. The candidates will complete ten assessments. Four assessments are completed via a portfolio where they will analyze student work. They will submit a video of their teaching, as well as write about their teaching. Six assessments are completed online at an assessment center where they will showcase their content knowledge. Richland Two offers support for all of our candidates through workshops such as orientations, renewal sessions, and writing. Tonight, we are proud to announce that we have thirty-five new National Board Certified Teachers, bringing our total to six-hundred-and-fifty-four teachers who have earned National Board Certification as a Richland Two teacher, making us number one in the state. Tonight, I have three colleagues with me. Matthew Owens from Spring Valley High School, who's going to share his perspective on the workshops that we offer here in the district. He's one of our workshop presenters. Emily Eastep, a teacher from Bethel Hanbury. She is a first-time National Board Certified Teacher, who will share her perspective on the process, as well as Octavia Hamilton Hankins. She is a teacher here at Polo Road, and she will speak about the renewal process. But I do want to acknowledge that she's also one of our workshop presenters.
Greetings.
Good evening.
Our district has a wealth of resources and support that led these candidates through rigorous assessment centers and portfolio assessments required to obtain board certification under the National Boards for professional teaching standards. We have hosted many workshops to help support NBCTs in becoming proficient with the requirements in submitting exemplary documentation that is representative of an accomplished teacher. I have had the honor of working with these initial NB candidates and National Board Renewal Candidates, who have been certified already for at least eight years through hands-on training geared towards the standards for National Boards. These workshops served a multitude of teachers, both content-specific and generically. It is great to know that our district provides support district-wide and that NBCTs support the first-time candidates. We train candidates to write descriptively on their teaching and pedagogical practices, and regardless of how many years of experience one has, the reflection is the most important process. Many teachers, along with myself, have read our share of portfolios and watched and reflected upon video segments of great teaching. As an active 2009 NB candidate and peer assessor, I am proud to continue to assist and mentor initial NBCTs and renewal candidates. I encourage each of you to continue to uphold the standards of National Boards and maintain the district's professional image of having highly qualified, trained teachers and practitioners. You have joined a great network, and I challenge each of you to mentor someone else. Again, congratulations, NBCTs and renewal candidates, for your support, and thank you, Richland Two, for your support of the recognition for these professional practitioners.
I returned to teaching in 2006, after being a stay-at-home mom for twelve years. The National Board Certification process was a long one for me. I took the full three years, missing it by less than a point, two years in a row. So for me, one of the highlights was finally seeing that congratulations message in November. But as Michelle mentioned, the five propositions, one of the most challenging for me was that fourth one, systematically thinking about our teaching and our practices and learning from our experiences. I think especially another highlight was of a student that I worked with, and I teach writing to fifth graders. And for him, writing was torture, but art and drawing was heaven. And so through the National Board process, I was able to work with him, and we found ways to incorporate his drawing into his writing. And he became an enthusiastic author by the end of the year. So that was incredibly rewarding thing for me. It continues to challenge me to find ways to reach the heart of those hundred-and-fifteen fantastic fifth-grade authors that I get to spend the day with every day. And I also feel the National Board process really gave me a head start on the Working on the Work program that we're involved in, because it dovetails very well with the idea of designing engaging lessons for our who. The other, another proposition was being a part of a learning community. And I am very thankful to be a member of the Richland Two Learning Community, particularly the one at Bethel Hanbury. I work with amazing people. I appreciate the district and the Board's generous support of this program. It's a powerful way to train and equip us, and I appreciate you continuing to invest in us so that we can serve most effectively. Thank you.
Good evening, Richland Two family. I am Octavia Hamilton Hankins, and I am the Instructional Technology Specialist here at Polo Road Elementary. I personally am extremely grateful and thankful to National Boards, because I know that choosing to go through the initial certification and then the renewal certification process made me a better educator. I would highly encourage any educator to go through that certification process. For me, becoming a better educator, that translated into me being better equipped to meet the needs of the various students that enter my door on a daily basis. So in this profession, one of our primary goals is to promote lifelong learning. And what better way to demonstrate to your students just how much you value learning than to allow them to see you going through the National Board process, learning, growing, and refining your craft, our craft of teaching? When you go through the National Board process, it requires, or really demands, that you self-reflect. It, you do it constantly. And in doing so, you, when you're designing your lessons for the classroom, those various learning experiences, you ask yourself instinctively, does this learning experience address the needs of all students? Will this learning experience address the various learning styles? Does this learning experience incorporate meaningful teaching strategies that would be considered or classified best practices? So as you instinctively do that so often, it becomes an innate part of who you are as an educator. When you earn your National Board Certification, the certificate is valid for ten years. And because in this profession, or much like in any profession, you never have it fully figured out. There's always more to learn, there's always room for growth. National Board says, if you wish to continue to call yourself a National Board Certified Teacher after the ten-year period, you must go through a renewal certification process. And that process requires you to document and demonstrate how, since earning your National Board Certification, you've continued to positively contribute to this profession. Two years ago, I decided to go through the renewal process. And I did so because I knew just how much going through the initial certification process helped me throughout the years, how much it had helped me to help my students throughout the years. Also, the National Board standards, they encourage you to seek out opportunities to serve in the role in our profession as a learner, as a leader, and a collaborator. And because of going through the process, I find myself doing that instinctively as I also learned through National Board, the process itself, to, in this profession, be very cognizant and deliberate with regard to what I do, why I do it, and even the manner in which I do it. So for that reason, I guess in another eight years, if I don't have too many more gray hairs, I will be embarking upon another journey of renewal certification so that I can continue to do and be the best educator that I can.
Are there any questions at this time?
I've got a comment and a statement. First off, I want to thank all of you for all the hard work that you've done to become National Board Certified. It's very exciting to see our teachers being recognized, like many other professionals in the legal world, and the IT world, and other areas where your certifications demonstrate expertise and a willingness to commit above and beyond. One of the things, and I mentioned this last year in my board priorities, and actually have the same board priorities this year, they carried over, is that I would like to see us as a district utilize your expertise with our children and our schools in the district that need the most help. And I would challenge the district to look at how we can maximize your expertise, your knowledge, the skills you bring to the table with our students that do require the most work and the most help to get to that next level. And certainly something I would like to see us focus on in the coming years.
Thank you.
Other board members' comments? Just like to congratulate, add my congratulations to each and every one of you. We're going to bring you forward in just a second.
You will come forward.
Okay, let's go. Board, let's go.
All right, we'll start with our renewals from Bethel Hanbury, Amy Baker, and Robert Saxon, Bookman Road Elementary, Chandra Sadler, Bridge Creek Elementary, Beth Kenecheck, she told me that. Center for Achievement, Janelle Jones, Conder Elementary, Monica Addison, Karen Hall, Forest Lake Elementary, Lisa Levangi-Colin, Killian Elementary, Yolanda Coach Fields, Lake Carolina Elementary, Stacy Knutson, Langford Elementary, Doritah Garland, Tina McDonald, Pontiac Elementary, Rita Reilly, Molly Robbins, Round Top Elementary, Ladonna Dixon, Susan Neils, Sandlapper Elementary, Lisa Dawkins, Lisa Duda, Ruby Goff, Blithwood Middle, John Bloodworth, Denise Webster, Kelly Mill Middle, Pamela Bruni, Kevin Roletter, Summit Parkway, Maria Lee, Blithwood High, Hope Reed, and Kimberly Teederman, Richland Northeast, Margot Jeffers, Ridgeview High School, Andrea Juergens, Tina McCray, Nicole Walker, Wendy Wimmer, Spring Valley High School, David Allison, Kimberly Boucher, Andrea Klutz, Debbie Esler, Mike Harrell, Roseanne Pyle, Angela Trusdale, Vicki Westbrook, and Carrie Whitley, Westwood High School, Jennifer Callahan, Kathy Carroll, Ann Richardson, and Rodney Summers. For our brand-new National Board Certified Teachers, from Bethel Hanbury, Emily Eastep, Bookman Road Elementary, Ashley Harris, Forest Lake Elementary, Ashley Johnson and Ann Wertz, Killian Elementary, Tawana Alexander Coleman, Ramona Brown, Wendy Harris Young, Lake Carolina Elementary, Karen Maddox, Olivia Schultz, Jessica Skinner, Nelson Elementary, Miranda Hayward, Carol Mobley Lester, Polo Road, Ashley Minkel, Rice Creek, Jessica Holly, Jennifer McLinton, from Windsor Elementary, Jason Ashley, Jennifer Boone, Melanie Brent, Chelsea Green, Kristen O'Cut, from Dent Middle School, Makisa Sumpter, Kelly Mill Middle, Heather Alexander, Elizabeth Dew, from E.L. Wright Middle, Angela Brazil, and Dustin Curtis, Blithwood High, Jennifer Garnett, Arcana Norton, Richland Northeast, Patrick Blake, and Laura Hamilton, Ridgeview High School, Joanna Strickland, Calvinetta Williams Brown, from Spring Valley High School, Carrie Arnold, Beverly McCullough, Lori McDuffie.
If we could give them all a round of applause.
Yeah, that's a lot of work. Glad we've continued to support that, seeing others districts waning in that support.
From both the elementary and the high school level.
Well, we'll get back to our meeting.
Oh, yes.
In a minute. I don't know if they're having a group picture or a group hug back there, but it really doesn't matter.
Getting the nameplates.
Oh, are they? Okay. That's great. That's what we see on the door of the room. Okay, great. At this time, those, as our first public participation period, has anyone signed up? Would anyone like to address the Board at this time? Three-minute comments? Here's your opportunity. Seeing no takers, we'll move on to our executive session items. Student Appeals. Do I hear a motion for student appeals?
Mr. Chair, student number one recommend Blithwood Academy. Student number two, deny. Student number three, Blithwood Academy. Number four, deny. Three was Blithwood Academy. Four was deny. Five, Blithwood Academy. Ready? Six, Blithwood Academy. Seven, Blithwood Academy and Lurideak. Eight, deny. Nine, deny. Ten, Blithwood Academy and Lurideak. Eleven, Blithwood Academy and Lurideak. Twelve, Blithwood Academy and Lurideak. Thirteen, deny. Fourteen, deny. Fifteen, deny. Sixteen, deny. Seventeen, I recommend Anna Boyd and a written apology.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. That's a lot of appeals. Motion passes six to zero. Next item, there's an appeal for a student transfer. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the student transfer as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a second by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion at this time? Motion fails. Do I hear another motion? Well, if it fails.
It fails.
Fails, it fails. Okay, don't need another motion. Okay, next item. Any other items on the executive session? I believe most of them we'll deal with in the next one. Anything left?
Chairman, do we have to table the personnel matter until, or is that, how do we need to address that?
You can table that if you'd like.
Till after, or?
No, you don't have to do anything. It's just, it's already on the executive session. We'll just add that next for the motion.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, you, we'll just make that motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, business action requested, item nine point one, approval revisions to policy ADIAJA. Those three policies.
Mr. Chair, I move that we do first, do we have to do?
No, this is action requested. It's been brought up.
It's just one approval, or do we have to go through?
No, you can approve them all.
I, I, it's just one approval. I make the motion that we approve all three revisions.
Second.
This is basically, is just making this in with our mission statement.
Mission statement.
And that's all. Okay. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item on the, for action requested, is item nine point two, which is our eight percent capital improvement budget. We have discussed that, that was on the agenda last time. Mr. Davis, or Ms. Dr. Broschew, or, and we have our bond counsel.
Ladies and gentlemen, we do have our bond counsel with us tonight, Ms. April Lucas from Nixon Pruitt. If the Board has any questions for Ms. Lucas, and of course, Dr. Ham, Mr. Kramer, Mr. Carter, and I will also be happy to answer any questions as well.
Is it still good climate to sell bonds for?
Right now, it is, but I would issue as much as I could right now. We do expect rates to go up sometime maybe later this year. Of course, if the economy turns, that could change, but, but we do expect rates to go up.
It's hard to get much better, isn't it? It just, I mean, we always, we always say that, but I mean...
It is, and also there are some proposals in Washington that might impact the rates on tax-exempt bonds as well, including proposals by some people to do away with tax exemption altogether for state and local bonds. So we don't know how that might come out. The Government Finance Officers Association is, of course, paying close attention and trying to make sure that we preserve full tax exemption for this kind of bond transaction.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chair, is this the same rate we would have gotten a couple of months ago?
Well, we have not yet gone to market, but we do expect the rates to be very similar.
They're similar, that's what, that was my question, really. The rates are basically what they were a few months ago.
Right. And this is part of your, your standard general obligation eight percent program where you go relatively short-term. We expect to pay down this debt in about four, over a four-year period. We do expect good rates, and we expect to be in the market fairly soon. We've delegated to the chairman and to the superintendent, or the chief financial officer, the ability to approve the final rates, not to exceed five percent, but I don't think we'll come close to that. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good discussion. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion that we approve, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I make the motion that we approve the recommendations of the district.
Okay, there's, is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Do we need to read the resolutions?
The resolution is in your packet.
Do we need to read that, or just?
No, we have.
Okay.
She was on the other page, it may not have flicked up, but she... Unanimous vote, thank you very much.
Thank you.
New business, no action requested. Proposed revisions to board policies. Policy, um, I'm telling you, this press got smaller. JIC, JJ, policy JJ dash R. JJ dash E. Policy JLDBB. Those policies are on our, uh, for discussion tonight. Uh, who's, who's going to do that?
Um, Mr. Cleveland Smith, Executive Director of Administrative Services, will present the policies. And Dr. Hamm and Dr. McDaniel will be able to, uh, will be more than happy to address any questions along with Mr. Smith. And we also have some high school and middle school principals here in case you have additional questions this evening.
What brought this about? Was this something that Barbara Specter asked? It wasn't, it was?
Not, not my name.
That's the one that's coming up, okay.
Mr. Chairman, board members, the first policy, JICJ, use of electronic communication devices in schools. The reason we're bringing that policy to you for consideration, for revision at, at this time, is because, um, the middle schools would like to adhere to the same practices as our high schools in regards to the use of technology.
Okay, so, any, any discussion, um, on this policy, that we're just including the middle schools in our, in our, uh, policy of, uh, JICJ, which is the use of electronic devices. So, we're gonna let sixth graders roll in with cell phones and pagers, and that's okay with you guys? I mean, y'all, I think you're crazy, but that's up, I mean, I... And you're all sitting in a row there, so I'm on, so I, I know who you are, and, uh... Tell me, somebody tell me why you want to continue to do this? Cause I really don't know. Somebody, just come up. I don't care, Lori, uh, Brenda, it doesn't matter, okay?
We, we recognize that the students have the devices, they're in schools, they're in the morning, they're in the afternoon. We know that parents, uh, request that the students have them. For a lot of parents, it's a safety issue. Students get on the bus, some parents don't even have a home phone anymore, they only have a cellphone. And the only way for them to communicate with their child is through the cellphone. So, at this age, at the middle school, that is certainly a viable part of their day and how they communicate with their parents. And we wanna be as respectful of that as we possibly can. And we think that this policy still prohibits them using it inappropriately and allows us to deal with that, if they do, if they are inappropriate. But it does allow them to have it on campus and without us being too hard about that when we find them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Have you guys also had some, over here, sorry, I know I moved. It, have you guys also found some issues with parents not understanding that the high school rules are different than middle school? Cause I, for some reason, I thought we blanketed all the schools in our last policy change, so I overlooked that.
I have not had that personally at Muller Road, but I'm not sure if the other middle schools, that may very well be the case. That they do have children at the high schools and they're dealing with one policy and they have students at the middle school with another. And typically, they like things to be as consistent as possible, obviously, with their kids.
Is there any educational advantage of, uh, having cell phones in this for your students?
You know, I, I think it's more about safety, really. I mean, I do think we have devices that we use for educational purposes. We do have some students and teachers who will sometimes use, uh, a cellphone for purposes of research, but most of them all have devices now. That's not really the issue. I really think it's more of a safety issue.
And I have one question. I guess my question is, how are you going to deal with discipline when a student refuses to give it up? Because I know in high school, students are recommended for expulsion, for not turning over a cellphone. How are you gonna handle that with a middle school student?
Anytime a student refuses to do, as an administrator asks them to do, then there's a consequence for that action. And typically, I think we're all in the suspension mode for that, when they do that. I'm not sure it's a recommendation for expulsion, I'd have to go back and look at the handbook. But when they refuse to adhere to an administrator, that's, uh, almost immediately a suspension.
Well, what warrants requesting cell phones from the students? If we're allowing them to have cell phones, then why would a, a teacher take or remove it from a student?
Well, currently, they're not allowed to have them during the school day. So, if they see them out, student, teachers will take them. Which is why we would hope that at this point, we could change that. Sometimes, we even have teachers who have just seen them and taken them, even though a student may not be using them. So, they do that simply because our policy right now is that if you do see them, you take them, you confiscate them and give them to the administrator, and then we turn them back over to a parent.
I'll add a little bit to that, too, if I could. Right now, the policy, uh, allows the school to decide when and where students can use the phones on campus. And also allows teachers to decide whether and how students can use the cell phones while they are in class. So, a student, for example, when a teacher says, you know, this is not an activity where you can be using your cell phones, if a student did, that would be a reason to take that cellphone away. Or if they're using it at an inappropriate or disruptive time.
Mr. Chairman? I, I respect the, the view that you shared with this, but given the struggle that our middle school students have been having with Chrome notebooks and, and other handheld devices. I'm concerned about this falling into that same category. Uh, we've struggled trying to resolve the issue of them using these handheld, handheld devices inappropriately. We've struggled with it outside of school, and all those issues going to unauthorized sites, and on, and on, and on. And if we're having that much difficulty with that device, that's clearly much more linked to instruction. Now asking these same young people who are struggling with their own development to now be responsible for a cellphone, I, no disrespect, but I, I have some major concerns with that, Mr. Chairman. And I just wanted to share that on the record. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And I do, too. I mean, I just really, um, first of all, it's not as common, and I'm sure sixth, not as many sixth graders have, have cell phones, is, uh, maybe they... You know what my granddaughter does, and what am I saying? I mean, they didn't ask, they did not ask me. I forgot, they forgot to ask me. But my granddaughter does, I must admit they have them, so... I'm just really, I'm like Mr. Jackson, I, I, I see, I see problems and, and, uh, and I want you to honestly, or, if we change this policy, which I feel sure is gonna happen, I just hope that we'll get some honest feedback from you guys. Cause I do have, while I may vote for it this year, I may not vote for it next year, so I just wanna make sure that, you know, that we get a good fee, feel for what happens. Especially the younger, especially the younger students, I think that's very much. And you're on the spot, you stood up here, so I'm not, uh, I see that nobody else did, so I'm not, I'm not jumping on you, Lori.
Short straw.
But, um, but, um, just, I, I'm with you, Mr. Jackson, I do have feelings about that.
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, if, working in the IT field, th- this problem goes beyond middle school or high school, it goes into the workplace. Um, you know, I'm often asked to, to block certain sites, so they want me to block Facebook, or Twitter, or whatever it is. And, uh, you know, adults are just turning to their cell phones to bypass the rules and waste time at work. Um, so I see it as a life skill, um, in our society today. I mean, the students have the devices, and, uh, they have to somehow learn to manage them responsibly in a work-like environment, which for them is the school. And, uh, so I, I think that as we go forward, I mean, this is an inevitability that we have to deal with. Again, adults are as or worse with responsibility for these devices as some of our students are.
That's a, that's a lot of things, Mr. Manning.
Yeah, I know, yeah, I know.
But I appreciate you, uh, uh, those are true comments, there's no, any other discussion? Okay, this is for information, okay, next, Mr. Smith, thank you, Lori. You brave soul.
The next policy we're bringing toward you tonight is JJ, JJ dash R, E dash one, JJ E dash two, student activities. At, the reason behind bringing this to you is, the General Assembly this year enacted the Equal Access to Interscholastic Activities Act to allow participation by home school, charter school, and governor school students in such activities at their resident public school. This act is in conjunction with provisions of the Charter School Bill, which states that charter school students are eligible to compete for, and if selected, participate in extracurricular activities, including athletics at their resident public school. If their activity or athletic team is not offered by the charter school they attend. These revisions modify our student activities policies to reflect changes from the Equal Access Act, bringing our policy into compliance.
Compliance with the law, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, it says, in one of the, uh, red, red areas of change, it says to be eligible in the first semester, a student must pass a minimum of five Carnegie units applicable towards high school diploma. Okay, at least, so, so that's what this, is that, does that confirm with, is that with our policy, too? Or is that, is that more or less, or does that confirm, um, line up with our policy? The, all of these things. I mean, I know our policies are more stringent than the high school league as far as eligibility.
Yes, sir.
So, we can, so we can hold charter, uh, students or other students to those regulations, too, or do we have to refer back to the high school league?
On page two of JJ dash, dash R. Under academic support programs. We, um, state that the charter school and home school students are expected to receive appropriate academic support through charter school or home school program. So, we're asking, we're letting them know that they still have to abide by what our students are abiding by, and we're asking for that support to be provided by the charter and the home school.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, two, two questions. One, on, uh, home school, they have three different options, right? One of those is, I call it loosey-goosey, but, uh, you know, there's not really grades per se, right? And the, uh, where the parent has full, uh, ability to manage that, is that correct?
Well, they have to be a member of a home school association.
Okay, so that loosey-goosey one isn't a member of that, right? There's, so there's two options that fall under that for home school, not all three? Is that correct?
They have to be a member of the association, which covers actually more than two, but, um, uh, more than two types of home schools, but yes, what you're asking is correct.
Okay.
The loosey-goosey is taken care of.
I know that's not technically correct, but, um, the, the other thing is, um, the, uh, does this cover band and things? Cause I know the, the law at one time didn't cover some of those other activities, and we talked about that we would just extend it for everything.
Sure, and, and the, the law, uh, there's a law that's written for home school students, there's a law that's written for charter school students, and those laws are inconsistent with one another. That's one of our challenges, and we also have a, an interpretation by the Attorney General that, um, uh, brings into another, another layer for consideration. Uh, what we are recommending we do is that the policy follows law, but we're afforded the latitude to allow students to, charter school and home school students to participate in a couple of key categories. And those include band, after-school band, after-school chorus, after-school ROTC, flag corps, and orchestra. Uh, the idea of those would be the extracurricular portions of those activities. And we believe that's consistent with the intent of the law, and we believe the letter of the law, uh, based on what we're hearing, uh, uh, at the House, will, will catch up down the road.
And, uh, I, I know in some band and some of those, they require some academic components to that. Are we just waiving that piece now, or are we requiring them to?
There's some details to work through, but, um, in the spirit of allowing them to participate, they will be able to participate in the extracurricular portions, the after-school portions, and it won't be for credit. They won't be, uh, taking the band for credit, uh, in a curricular manner.
And, and the fees are consistent with our other students? There's no additional fees outside of what are?
Exact same as what our Richland Two students would pay.
Thank you.
Questions, Mr. Jackson?
Mr. Chairman, um, I hate to muddy the water because it's not one of the highlighted areas, nor is it one of the ones that have been, um, struck through, but, uh, Ms. Smith, our, at, the overall GPR for our students, um, that seems lower than... Let me ask the question rather than assuming. Is that consistent with the high school league's recommendations? That it must have a minimum of a one point five as a freshman, one point seven as a sophomore, and then a two point O as a junior, senior? Do you know, and I hate to put you on the spot about that, as I said, because it's not part of the discussion.
I will go back and check that.
If you would.
I will go back and check that.
I would appreciate that.
I think Mr. Garrett can answer that question right now.
Uh, that was in the policy as a phase in. We phased it in to get to the two point O. So...
Well, the high school league is, is the one.
Yes.
You just have to have a D average to, to participate with the high school league.
So, by the time they get to their junior year, they should be at the two point O. So, it's phased in over the years. But, yes, the answer to your question, it's higher than the high school league.
But it's not higher than some of our, our neighboring school districts, is really where I was going. I really wasn't focused, I wanted to sort of establish the high school league as the floor, but some of our neighboring school districts where the two point O is the standard, is really where I was going with my comment or concern. And I think I'm hearing you saying that we don't start at that, but we hopefully end up at that as a junior.
Yes, we, we end up that way now. Uh, the way it was implemented back when we first went to the two point O, and this was a consensus of the entire board, that we phase it in and not go directly to the two point O as freshmen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now, some, some other districts may do it differently.
That's correct, some, some start at the two point O.
Yeah.
That's why I asked the question. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Garrett.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay, next policy.
Policy, JLDBB Self Esteem Promotion Suicide Prevention. The revision to this policy will bring our policy in compliance with the changes to the law signed by the governor this year. And it includes language addressing the training piece now required by the Department of Education for the renewal of teaching credentials for certain individuals at the middle and high school level.
Any, any questions for Mr. Smith on?
So, do we have to have parental, um, consent on some of those things? Like, the developmental stages of adolescence, does that get into the health issues that at one time parents had to sign a consent for? Or how deep does that go? I guess I'm looking from a nursing standpoint. I mean, how deep would we go into the developmental stages of adolescence? Is that gonna be a, a situation where we will need or require parental consent?
I can check that one also. My understanding, it does not, but to make sure, I would check that part also.
Could we check to see, because we want, we don't get tied up with the legal issue where we didn't require, um, receive parental consent when it's something that maybe we should have?
Okay, any other questions? Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes, sir.
This is for information for the board, and we'll, we'll have, um, is this to be voted on in the next meeting?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Transcendence initiatives, uh, item ten point two. Who, Dr. Broshu, who's?
Yes, uh, Dr. Hamm and Jeff Potts, uh, from our Office of Accountability.
We have had a very active and dedicated team of people who have been studying the issues of trans students. Led by Jeff Potts, he's here, along with some members of the team. And I, this was a really excellent group of people. I hope you're gonna enjoy the report. I wanna publicly commend them for their hard work.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Broshu. Uh, this summer, the two thousand thirteen graduating class for Richland Two is likely gonna be the largest we've ever had. Uh, the graduate, the graduating class will have seen the district landscape change, probably like no other class before them. Um, when this year's graduating class started kindergarten, um, there were only, they would've attended one of eleven elementary schools in the district. Uh, there was only one, one-to-one classroom in the district, and Richland Two had ten thousand fewer students. When the class walks across the stage this summer, less than a quarter of those who walk across the stage will have started, would've started kindergarten in Richland Two. And likewise, uh, for two-thirds of that original kindergarten class that started twelve, thirteen years ago, two-thirds of those students moved away from the district by the time they would've graduated. have graduated high school. That's kind of the reason why we had to look at some of these issues dealing with transciency. Recently, we did convene a committee to address student transciency. The committee identified three main areas of students that we believe were the most impacted by transciency. Families of military, of which we have just over 2,000 students. We have families of immigrants. We do have 58 different languages spoken by students within the district, and also one of the most heavily impacted, we felt, were students whose families were heavily impacted by poverty. Remember that our district, of the nearly 27,000 students that we have in the district, about half of them are receiving free reduced lunch, and last year in 2011, '12, we had over 450 students that were designated as homeless. Within that one graduating class, as I said, only a quarter were here in kindergarten, and two-thirds of that class left, but we have a couple elementary schools in this district where five out of six students that start kindergarten won't be here by the time they're in fifth grade. And of those five students that leave, four of them usually leave the district altogether.
Wow.
Obviously, not all of our schools in the district are as heavily impacted as those few schools. As a district, from the time students would start second grade through fifth grade, we're likely to lose and gain a third of our student population within a class. Richland II has had, has had a major, has been impacted by transciency within the district. Nationally, mobile students are about half as likely to graduate, twice as likely to repeat a grade, and it's, it's seen that frequent school changes can correlate with lower academic achievement, and we've seen that at some of our schools that have had higher impacts of transciency. It's true that the longer a student has been in our district, the better they tend to perform, not only on standardized test measures, but to have higher attendance rates and to have fewer discipline incidences. These were some of the things that the district committee looked at, and what I'd like to do is have four of the members from our research or this transciency committee to come up, first starting with Dan Reyes, principal at Longleaf Middle School.
I'm here to share the nuts and bolts of what our district transciency data team actually did. We received the charge to explore transient students, who they are, and what we are doing about it, and oftentimes, we can define it, we open the book and we define it, but oftentimes, we don't, so what? We don't do anything with it and/or we don't explore it even further. And so, the transciency data team was created and was made up of classroom teachers, special education teachers, school administrators, guidance counselors, school registrars, school social workers, psychologists, school nurses, district psychologists, district social workers, and other district staff and personnel. And if there are any members of the transciency data team here, if you could stand up at this time, as we had many members to be a part of the team. As you can tell with the makeup of the team, our transient student population touches on a lot of different staff personnel. A student in poverty moves in and may require healthcare services and needs, and/or other services. For example, a military student comes in and may need guidance services and transition services and needs, et cetera. Our team met three times, and during our meetings, three times physically, but also through email and lots of virtual meetings as well, and during our meetings, we dissected the data, we broke up into teams and looked at three specific areas. Best practices, things that are, things that are being done for students and, for transient students locally, nationally, and in the state, in terms of how schools are meeting those needs. We also looked at our current enrollment and our current withdrawal practices, what we're currently doing, and finally, we looked at a framework to meet the needs of our transient students and families, kind of a checklist. What do we do when we receive a new student into our schools? And then, this data team, again, brought together several staff from across the district in all roles, and we provided a comprehensive outlook on the services that are being provided and explore the opportunities to meet the needs of all of our students. And so, at this time, Dr. Shirley Vickery, Director of Psychological Services, is going to share some more of that information.
I just have to concur with the others who've spoken. This was really a nice group to participate in. This issue is near and dear to my heart because I get called on to address needs of kids who move in and out all the time. One of the things we did in this team was look at the beginning, at things we think we're already doing that are best practices or that could be tweaked in some fashion to begin to address the needs of students. We wanted to kind of get a snapshot of what we're doing that we like, and so I'm going to read you some of those things that we identified. They're not happening everywhere to the same extent, but we think we can build on some of these practices. One thing we're doing, and this is really coming to practice in the last couple of years, is getting to know our who, and each school has been spending a lot of time learning about the students who are with them. When the case of a student who moves, that means you know who's moved to your school, you know how long they've been there, whether they came from our district, whether they came from outside of the district, and also how that student is adjusting to the move. So, getting to know that group of students and paying attention to that is really a good thing. The second thing is the addition of social workers to our staff this school year. We have basically doubled the number of social workers, and since some of these students we know fall into that homeless category, that's a group that social workers have worked with a lot, as well as those who are in poverty and need other resources. We've also recently increased the number of interventionists in some of our schools. This has not been district-wide, but we have identified intervention teachers, deliverers of academic interventions, that we're focusing on, some of the same schools that have increased transient rates. We've standardized to a great extent the use of certain benchmark testing that goes from school to school, and these things, if a student moves within Richland II, we can, the staff at each of our schools understands the use of that benchmark testing. We also think that the implementation of the common core standards and the training we've done with teachers on that will improve our consistency of instruction as the next years go on. Across the district, schools use a lot of different welcome activities for students. These tend to be things that involve peers, things that involve tours, lunch buddies, all kinds of different things, but each school has a different set of welcome activities. Every school in our district has a functioning team that we call an intervention assistance team, and that's in every school, and we've had these really for a long time. The students who move a lot tend to show up more frequently in those referred to these teams than other students, and those teams work really very well at each school. They don't operate the same, and there's some things that we need to tweak to get information back and forth between schools, but we know that schools have those teams all functioning. We've also worked really hard to identify as students move in, those who are already diagnosed as having disabilities, so that we can get the plans that they have in place, and we're supposed to implement those plans within the first day of the student arriving. That's a big challenge, but we've been working really hard on making that happen on the first day they arrive. You can imagine what a challenge that is. So, across these eight different areas that we identified as things that we see as best practices, we're already doing, we're really looking at ways to spread those out in schools and to enhance those in places where they're not quite going at the speed that in other places. And I think Alan Upchurch from Ridgeview High School is the next person.
Good evening. I'm here to talk to you about our framework for a checklist, checklist of those things that we would need to take care of when we are dealing with our transciency issues. The first of those three issues on their, the framework for this checklist, is the induction into school, and this is for the students and parents' socio and emotional development and their acclimatization with the school. So, we have a systematic approach for acclimatizing the students. First off, would be the tour of the school, conducted by a buddy or a student ambassador. In this time, the student would meet the librarian, instructional technology specialist, cafeteria manager, cashiers, custodian, school nurse, all of the individuals that they're going to need to interact with on a daily basis, so that they know face, name, I need this, this is the person who can help me. Plus, this gives them a person, their buddy, becomes their social guide for the next few days, or for the next semester, or for the next year, however long it takes them to find their own circle of friends. Then, of course, they're going to meet with their school counselor, or the counselors designate, and a social worker if the counselor feels that it might be warranted to do so, because we do recognize that not all parents will have an immediate, oh, we need to speak to our social worker. We need our counselors to step up a little bit on that and recognize those needs might be there, and trust that our social workers can determine what needs are actually there. All staff is going to be emailed or notified with regards to the new students and where they're from, so that there's at least something they can talk to them about, and we'll have short presentations for them, audio, visual, print flyers and such, of school-wide behavioral expectations and the systems that we have in place, including district policies about bullying, intimidation, harassment, safety. All of the things that are required, our AUP and RUP forms, brief explanation of the one-to-one initiative, so that the parents and children, when they come in, they know what it is they're getting into. You're going to be given this device, you have to take care of this device, this is what we expect you to do with this device. And of course, introduction to the key faculty and staff, which this doesn't have to be in-person, because of course, not everyone can hang around in the guidance office or the main office all day. It can be through video presentation, pictures and video of those individuals making their little presentations. And that's mostly for the students, but their parents are in on that as well. The systematic approach to acclimate the parents will involve a welcome packet for the parents, including a welcome letter from the principal, if the principal's not available, of course, to speak to them in person. Course syllabi, which they'll be provided at the middle school and high school levels to make sure that their course matches up with what they have been doing before, and those would be provided during their scheduling conference with their counselor. And of course, any services that would be offered to the child through our social workers. They'll help the parent create their parent portal account and a brief introduction on how to use that account, because every parent wants to know how their child is doing in school and wants to be able to check up on them. Then, of course, returning to their counselor for the scheduling conference where they receive their course syllabi, this course syllabi, of course, to be standardized across the district according to the common core standards. Meet with the social worker, if it's warranted, to discuss any available services or necessary services. Will inform the teacher and their designees to make any phone calls or contacts home to make sure that the parents know who it is they're talking to. I want to know the voice and the face of my teachers. And of course, inform the PTSO and the SIC about new enrollees, so they get invited to the monthly social agreements, you know, that we have with our SIC and PTSOs. And of course, that provides a social engagement for them. People can check up on them on a monthly basis to see, how are you adjusting to our neighborhood, you know, do you like it here? And last, on that one, of course, we can offer technical assistance to the parents who have set up their parent portal, and also how they can check their child's email account, because every student in District II has their own personalized email account. The second big issue with bringing students and their parents into our school are records and data checks. We've got to make sure that we get the information necessary to be able to help the child get what they need. This is especially difficult with extra district transfers. Those children who come to us from out of district or out of state, we are usually at a dearth for information about them. It takes days, sometimes even weeks, for districts and schools from out of state to send us information that's necessary to make sure the children's services are being properly applied to them. So, this is one of the things that we have to make sure we are diligent with, with transcripts, grades, and any retention information. Special services reviews, making sure that our special case, special services case managers get ahold of this child as quickly as possible to determine whether or not there actually is a need for these types of things, like IEPs, Plan 504, and alert services for those gifted and talented students, because it's not just the kids who need the extra services on the bottom end, we've got to talk about the top-end kids too, because they are just as needy. ESOL reviews for those children who might be potential ELL candidates. IAT coordinator is supposed to review their records for potential students needing the services, making sure they're federal school lunch program status. If we don't have a copy of their application from their previous school, we need to get one immediately, because that, we have a lot of children in poverty here, and we want to make sure that they get fed. Health room records and medical information, you cannot believe how difficult it is to take care of a child if they are sick and you don't know what is wrong with them. Impact aid forms, this is currently known as the Student Parent-Pupil Data Form. This affects taxation in our district. Because of us being a federal land base, we have a lot of taxes that are not paid to us directly through sales taxes and from work taxes and property taxes because of the federal sites that are about. We need to make sure that if they are federal employee dependents, that they have been counted as such. And of course, short form of the MAP, the, this is a measure of academic progress, we would do the short version of this rather than the long McGill, just to make sure that we know where they stand academically. Now, of course, intra-district transfers are much easier, because almost all of this information is sitting on M-RICH, which thank you for providing that to us. But of course, there are some small things that are not provided on M-RICH, which are covered by M-Class, AmesWeb, and other things for intervention data. Now, the last of those items that they'd have to worry about on our checklist is withdrawal from school. First off, you've got to get them into the school, make them happy. Second, you've got to make sure everything's in order for them, but the last thing is always, sometimes they have to leave, and sometimes they leave very quickly. We've got to be sensitive to that. Make staff aware that these students are leaving. Sometimes, the children don't even know until the day of that they are leaving. Meet with the school counselor, designate to begin the process, the exit interview with the parents if they are willing, or if they have the time for it. The counselor escorts the parent to each of the required locations. A lot of parents have told us that they find it impersonal when it's time for them to withdraw their child, because they're given a checklist and then they're just cut loose. You go to guidance, okay, well, your next step is across the hall, but no one walks them across the hall. We want someone to walk them across the hall. We want them to introduce the person that they're going to be talking to next. Give that little personal touch. Make them feel good about the fact that they're having to leave. Don't make it more difficult for them. Be sensitive to the parents who don't have time to come up to the school or prefer to complete the process via phone. Some parents don't even tell us that they're leaving, they just take their children in the dead of night and leave. This is difficult for us because they wind up counting against us on certain academic progress reports later in the year when we don't have a transfer record on them. We want to make sure that we try to get as much of that as possible. Provide helpful information to the teacher regarding the student. The new teacher wants to know about their student that's coming into their new district. Let's be the district that gives them everything they need. If they ask for records from us, let's give them everything we've got. They want to know from their, from the kid's last teacher, was he a behavior problem? Tell them. Did he have good grades? Tell them. Was he helpful in the milk line? Yes, tell them. Tell them everything you know about that kid, because if we model this kind of behavior for other districts, maybe they'll be nice enough to reciprocate for us. And if applicable, provide any information on interventions or services that were provided to the child. If this child received certain services from our social worker, it would be nice to get them in contact with the social worker at their new school. Other questions for the withdrawals can be, can the parent provide the name or the location of their next school? And if the parent can't, offer to assist them. Sometimes, they know where they're moving, but they haven't figured out where they're going to take their kids to school yet. We have the resources to be able to do that kind of research for them and to do it quickly. We can tell them what schools are there, we can tell them who to talk to at those schools to get things going. It takes us just a moment. Let's not make it difficult for them. Ask them where they're going. If they know, ask them if they picked a school, and if they haven't, try to help them. And once we're notified by the next school for records, there should be a follow-up call by one of our counselors put in place shortly thereafter to make sure, do you have all the records you need for this child? What else can we do to help you? Any questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman.
Start to my left.
You guys really did a lot of work, a lot of thorough work there. I love the customer service idea. I almost think of like a concierge, some of your last statements about how to transition folks in and out, you go to a hotel and you don't know what's in the area.
That's how I paved my way through college.
So, there you go, you have the background. And then, the onboarding process that you have put in place, just like a new employee, to make sure that they're familiar with the surroundings. surroundings, and where everything is, and the policies. I wonder if, when parents coming in, trying to get any information from the parents, how much of that is sometimes language barrier? What are ways we can build trust with the parents? Because I'm sure if they left for many reasons, where there's some distrust of the home environment, that that may be part of the reason they're not forthcoming. They don't want anybody to know where they are, for whatever reason. What are some ways we can handle some of those issues?
Most of those issues would be covered by a good counselor, who knows what, who can tell just by the initial-
Could you speak into the mic a little bit closer, please?
I apologize.
Most of those issues could be addressed very quickly by the observant counselor in their initial meeting. If there's a language barrier, obviously, she'll notice that, she or he will notice that very quickly. Most of the language barriers can be overcome, because the district does contract services for us to provide interpretation for multiple languages. As far as if there are individuals needing a particular social services, again, an observant counselor will notice that certain things don't-
Seem to add up.
And they can tell someone needs to talk to them about what services might be available. And a social worker has a little more training, and a little more sensitivity on how to get that information away from the parents, so that they can draw that information out and make a wider picture of how things are really going to need to be impacted by our services that are available. So, we're really wanting our counselors to be basically the fork on the front of all of this. They have to stick it in, and then provide the services behind them, drag it on along.
And so, how are you ensuring that this isn't just a checklist, but a part of the culture of district staff, that this is an ongoing process, that we continue to look at and address? And maybe you already have an answer for that, and I'm getting there.
Actually, education and training, and I believe the best person to answer the question for how we're going to make sure this works is Abby Cobb, our lead social worker.
Good evening. And just to kind of follow up with some of the questions that you asked about the sensitivity when parents come in for enrollment, that is one thing that we addressed in one of the breakup teams that we had, was to discuss enrollment and withdrawals. And we opened up the discussion, and a lot of different things came up, but one of the things that we did really look at is our forms, that we have parents filling out. And several of us on the committee, as well as our lead, our head registrar, looked at it. And we, and we think that there's some room for improvement there as well, looking at our forms, making sure that they're real user-friendly, making sure that we're asking the accurate, the information that we really need to have, and making sure that it's on a very, just a basic level, so that we're really getting the information that we need, and making sure that those are really user-friendly.
Right, exactly. That's, when I go to the doctor's office, no offense, Bill, but I get tired of putting my name and address at the top of three forms that are sitting, you know, underneath, to make it easier.
I think we have become pretty aware of how that can be difficult for our families. And it is something that we're addressing, and we're, and we're quite aware of how that's, you know, impacting our families, when we're coming in for enrollment. That impacts their, their mood, their attitude, and, and all of that plays a major factor as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Let me, let me applaud and commend you for excellent job of being proactive in addressing what I consider to be a very, very critical issue. And also, for not, not being influenced by those who might think that this is such a small population, that it's not worth paying attention to. So, I want to say that publicly, how tremendously grateful I am for that. And I also want to say publicly, I want to thank Mrs. Anderson, who, on last year, led the charge to get those additional social workers in the budget and approved, so that, that cadre of folk out there now, front, on the front line, making sure that this population does not fall through the cracks. So, great kudos to you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Anderson?
My question is a quiz question for all of you that's involved in the transient, with the transient students. I experienced this a few years ago, and I just want to know how you guys would respond to this situation. And this is a real, real situation. Children move here from out of state. One child tells the counselor, whoever they're speaking with, that the other child was on an IEP. What would you do with that, that individual? And if you can't get in touch with the school that they came from, how would you handle that situation?
The laws about implementation of IEPs when student moves, student moves in are really very rigid, and require us to implement that IEP on the first day of the student's enrollment. But if you're not sure what kind of disability the child has, or what the IEP says, you really begin to be a detective about it. We make phone calls to the previous school, we, of course, interview the family, we look through the student's records, we talk to the kid, and then we, we get a signed release from the parent and request the records from where the student came. Sometimes, we can't verify it. That's very rare, though. It, it usually is a situation where we can pull it together and put together enough information to implement the IEPs really pretty quickly. And I'm really proud that we put as much effort into that as we do. So, most of the time, it works out.
Hypothetically, if this is a foster child, and you can't get the records, do you leave that child out of school, or do you get the records?
No, we don't. We used to leave them out. We used to have a seven-day window, when we could wait to implement services. We go ahead and implement the services as close as we can without the written documents. And then, within seven days, we, we hold a team meeting to review the, whatever we've gotten at that point. And with fax machines, and emails, and electronic records of some IEPs, we're getting better about sharing, folks are getting better about sharing those things. We will very soon have the capability within state to hit a button, and the IEPs will go around the state electronically. So, that'll help us even more.
Well, that was, the reason I wanted to know, if we were doing it differently than what was found to have happened a couple of years back, where children were brought here from, they're in foster care, and one child was in school, and the other child was out of school for like, two weeks, waited on records that they couldn't get from the other state. And I just happened to run into these people in the doctor's office and question why this child was out of school. And of all districts, it was District Two. It was the most embarrassing thing I think I could have run into.
That is, that is embarrassing. And really, two weeks is a very long time. That, that's really very, wish I'd known about that situation. We really, I don't know of any situations that have happened like that recently.
Okay, so we will go ahead and place every child that comes into our district. And we are still looking for, I believe, is it twelve more social workers? How many more social workers do we need to get one for each school? Does anyone have a number that we have? How many social workers?
Abby does.
Absolutely. We have a total of nineteen, but that is eighteen in the schools. So, nineteen includes myself. So, we have eighteen social workers providing direct practices in our schools. We have five social workers in full-time at our high schools, and then we have three social workers full-time at Windsor, Condor, and Keels. The rest of the, the ten remaining social workers are assigned to the remaining schools.
So, we still need to continue. I think that was one of my priorities, work on social workers. Because I, I think it's very important that we have the social workers in the school, along with the counselors.
Absolutely.
Because we're having more and more problem children, and children are coming from stressful situations. Parents are stressed, and it's a triple-down effect. So, if people get tired of me pushing social workers, I, I, I look at the fact that it's going to get worse, and we need to be prepared, so that we can handle it. And I applaud you guys for the work that you've done on this, because I think it's a very touchy situation.
And, and I would love to take this opportunity to, to thank you for the opportunity to add to our social work staff. I think this year has really shown a great impact. We've really been able to address the needs of our families and our students. And by having lowercase of school assignments, the social workers are really able to get intergrained in the sta, with the staff and the schools, working very closely with our counselors, and our administrators, and our nurses, and really trying to get to know who those students are, and what the needs of their families are. And so, I, I think it's been very impactful.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Chairman, with our, on the increase in our social workers, have we been able to alleviate some of the load off our guidance counselors? And I know that's another, and maybe you can't speak to that, and if you can't, we can certainly, I can hear back from staff later, but another area where I know our guidance counselors are quite overburdened.
We're looking into that, Mr. Manning. We'll be happy to get back with you about what they're doing, their responsibilities.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have, I have a couple. I think we need to work towards, and this is, I think this is a good practice, of being able to, for our students to have the information they need, at the touch of a finger. I mean, literally. Whether it's transcript, I don't know how we can, we, we can do it. I mean, we can do this, okay? We can have their information at their fingertips, almost immediately, somehow. I don't know how we do it. We can develop a program to do it, a computer program, we can, however we do it. Okay, I would like to see that done, because I know what y'all go through when people come into this district. I've known too many people in guidance, I'm talking about the clerical people in guidance, who are trying to run records now. It's awful. It's terrible. But I don't want to be that district. So, I mean, somehow, I think we, if we can see, see ways to develop a system to do that. And also, I wouldn't mind having the transfer, having to sign a transfer notice when they come in. I mean, as a part of their record, dad gum it, if you say we're having problems with them transferring out, we don't know where they are. I don't know how you, I don't know what y'all do with that, because you're right, it does affect our, our test scores. But we can, because we have to count a student, I guess, as absent or something. I don't know how you exactly, if we don't have a record of them being transferred out or something. But, but my next question is about best practices. This is not only a Rich and Two problem, is it?
Oh, absolutely not. And one of the things that I think that we've recognized in, in putting this data team together, is there is a lot of information about working with military families. And there's a lot of information working, and we're getting there, about working with our homeless families. And I think we are kind of leading the way right now, in trying to figure out, how do we work together with those kind of in the middle? The practices that we need to use for our families that are highly mobile, but are also dealing with poverty, are not necessarily the same that we need to provide to our military families. While this is not a new, you know, issue that's come up, there's not a lot of research about these high-poverty students and them being transient and mobile.
Yeah, but people are do, people in Georgia are dealing with this. I mean, somebody's dealing with them. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure. I don't know if they, and you say maybe the researcher, maybe they haven't written papers, maybe the information's not, I don't know, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying, people in Tennessee are, you know, where they're dealing with this. I mean, so this is not just, again, it's not a South Carolina problem. I, I, I'm sure that there's not much difference than we're doing. I mean, we, the problems are not different, they're probably very similar, so. But I just want to make sure we investigate things that include all the best practices that we can do. And I know y'all did that, so. But, well, it's good to hear that we're doing things in, in, you know, the best, you know, in a good way, so. But those are two things I, 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 I want to talk about, is information traveling with the child, and make sure we're, we know all the, we know the best practices, or as much as we can know about best practices. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman, also, one question. When you get a pair, a family in, transit family in, and do the social workers automatically sometimes refer them to the, my mind went blank on the program I spoke at the other day?
Intervention Services.
Intervention Services.
No, ma'am, it, it, it is not a natural flow, and, and I'll be honest with you, every new student that comes in is not automatically sent to the social worker as well. It, it is-
No, I'm not, I didn't mean it that way. I meant-
Oh, sorry.
A so, a new student that you, you feel needs to see a social worker.
Yes, ma'am.
Can that social worker, if the need be, go ahead and refer them?
Oh, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
They can?
We work very closely with the Intervention Services, and, and we're making referrals to them very frequently, as it's really meeting a need within our community. It's, it's a very close partnership.
Good. We just need more counselors in that area. Did you hear that, Bob?
Yes, my, my, and Dr. Brochue has a number of budget committees working right now, and Mrs. Anderson, I can tell you, is one of those committees. This subject has been discussed already.
Might be contingent upon whether we let you retire. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Okay, our second quarter financial statement, Dr. Brochue?
Yes, you have in your packet materials, the second quarter financial statement.
And Mr. Davis is here to answer any questions, and I'll be glad to assist as I can.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I, our Director of Finance, Ms. Shelley Allen, and Mary Salt, our Director of Accounts, Payable and Payroll, are at the ready, willing to answer any questions. The Board generally asks how we're tracking. We're tracking as expected for halfway point through the year. And the Board chair generally points out that revenues lag expenditures. Yes, sir?
Mine do. Okay, any questions for Mr. Davis? Thank you, Mr. Davis, for the good job to give a report. I mean, it's, it is what it is.
It's what it is.
No surprises, and at this point, that's, we're very fortunate this time not to have any surprises. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, items for our February twenty-six board meeting, which will be at Bookman Road. Haven't been out there in a while. I look forward to going to Bookman Road. Dr. Brochue?
Yes, sir. We have our student learning report. We will hear from our district security and crisis response on an update of where we are. We will be seeking approval for the three policies that were brought before you this evening. We will also have a report on dress code, and we will be reporting on human resources efficiencies and effectiveness.
Okay. At this time, are there other items for future meetings that you'd like to address? Just at the time?
Mr. Chairman, on the dress code, we read about, we read the policies on dress code that was in our packet. What are we going to be able to do about the dress codes compared to what the merchandise, the, not merchandise, but the designers are coming up with, with kids nowadays, for clothing?
I believe that that's what, and I spoke with Mrs. Specter earlier this week, last week, and that's what they want, that's what she wants to discuss. That was an issue that she brought up and wants to discuss with the rest of, you know, fellow board members.
After I read that, that was in a board pack, I was trying to figure out, and I didn't realize, you know, I, I'm a mother of boys, but just looking at little girl clothes, the clothing are, you almost have to wear what they make, unless you go learn to sew. I mean, those of you have little girls, you, you know what I'm talking, I was just, I was shocked at the tight clothing they're making for little girls nowadays. So, basically, the things that our, our policy-
Our policy is, is somewhat old, it's outdated. It went into effect, what years had I lost the flip-flop war, and Miss Montgomery was on the board. So, we're talking about a good fifteen years.
Has it been that long?
It's been, believe you me, it's been that long.
I don't think anybody wanted to bring it back up.
No.
I think that was the whole thing.
Yeah, so what are we going to do? I mean, for this to be on our agenda for next-
For discussion.
For discussion. So, we're going to give you guys some ideas, is that what you want from the board?
I'm not exactly sure what Mrs. Specter wanted, but we talked about it today in our middle school principals' meeting. And some principals have already started talking to the students, talking to parents, talking to teachers, getting some ideas. I did have a high school principal approach me a few months ago, about maybe that is something we need to consider, you know, looking at our dress code again. And so, this is a perfect opportunity.
Well, could I ask this, and if it's more than, than you guys want to do, let me know. But because I was such, in such a stage of shock of the tight clothing that they're making for our young girls, could we get a team of people to give us, you know, some of the, maybe the students, or teachers, or somebody? Because it's really difficult compared to our policy, as to what there's actually out there available for them to buy and wear to school.
Yes, ma'am. What we are asking principals to do, and we've discussed it earlier today, as Dr. Washington was mentioning, we're going to ask them to work with their SICs and/or a group of parents, students, and staff, and then bring recommendations of what, what they would suggest- and then bring recommendations of what, what they would suggest as they review the policy and those kinds of things that are available for them to, to purchase and, and supply for their children.
Well, if the board wouldn't mind, I'd like to, to get their suggestions and ideas before we look at the, the dress code policy.
Well, you want to turn it over to quote a design theme or something?
No, 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 no.
Why not? This is the perfect, if there was ever a perfect thing for, to do a design theme for-
But you can do that too. I just, I was in shock, I'm just saying.
I've been waiting for the perfect solution thing to, to use a design theme for, to get everybody involved.
Well, I didn't do that.
I was with, I was with Cheryl, it was-
Oh, yeah?
When I looked at Miss Montgomery, he has kids that were in flip-flops, and, and last time I said, you know, I thought I was in another world then. I mean, it's not an easy, I was there.
Yeah, so-
Fifteen years ago.
Well, I guess-
But if there was ever a, well, I'm sorry, that's just my opinion.
Well, no, if that's your opinion, I'm, I'm willing because I, I was in a stage of shock. I have boys, I don't have girls. And the little things that they're selling for little girls, even the baby girls, are horrible. I mean, I was just, so if you would like to get a design theme-
Or any, any, any type of, however we want to discuss it, but let's get, you know, parents, students.
We'll definitely bring a team of folks together and ask them to look at that issue at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and perhaps they can revamp that, the current dress code and bring a proposed one forward to the board.
Would you guys have objection if we remove this for the next meeting?
That's what we talked a little bit about today, is being more proactive with this than reactive. And if he, if we could put this off maybe until the first board meeting in March, that'll give us time to gather the information and everything and maybe-
Is that okay with the other board members?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make sure, I would like to see heavy student involvement in the front end of this to maybe have the students build something and then bring it to the adults to, to look through. I, I think our students need to be a, a heavy part of this process. Because they're going to help us determine what's appropriate for them and their learning environment. And I think that's a key component to making something that they can live with, so.
That, that was, well, that's what we discussed in our, in our conversation today.
Okay, that's perfect.
Involve students.
So that would be better for you guys? We tabled this for the next board meeting and then-
And just maybe move it to the first board meeting in March.
And check out the little boys too, because I don't know everything, but I just, I know a little bit more about boys' clothing than girls, so.
Thank you. Okay, any other items? We got rid of one, so I'm glad we did.
Oh, so you owe me.
I do. This is our second time of public participation at this time. If you'd like to address the board, please come forward and I'll be- You did get a sign up. Okay, I ask, anytime you address the board, keep it professional, courteous, and we have pretty much a three-minute limit. The first, well, the only, um, the only name here is Mr. Herbert Smith. Are you here, Mr. Smith?
Yes, sir.
State your name for me and your, and just what part of the district you live in.
Herbert Smith, and I live right behind Richland Northeast High School. I have one son at Condra Elementary, one son at Westwood, and one son at Blythewood Academy. And y'all may not remember because y'all see so many kids, but a couple of months back, my son just at Blythewood Academy, I had to bring him over here for a board hearing after his third expulsion, three years in a row, seventh, eighth, and this year, ninth grade. And his previous two, I never tried to defend him or anything. I spoke with Miss Chisman, I was like, just kick him out because he's not trying. And the last time though, I just seen something different in him. And I wanted to let y'all know how much I appreciated y'all giving him the opportunity to go to the academy. I, I tried to find an old paper with his, with his grades on it, and I just couldn't find any. But from what I recall, he was failing every single class when he went to the academy. And his worst grade at the academy is an 80 now. So he has made a complete, total turnaround. He got a certificate, a leadership certificate, and I had never seen a leadership quality in him, so. I tell y'all, I really appreciate, y'all have no idea. I had a farm up in Chesterfield County, I mean, actually, I still have it. I have a farm up there. I was taught through Richland District Two, but I did military and moved up there after getting out. And I wanted to raise my kids to have a work ethic, a work attitude that sometimes kids don't get in the city just because there ain't roads to plow, there ain't trees to cut. It's just a different lifestyle. Well, the school system up there, I knew most of the teachers and all, great teachers, but they're not managed properly. Probably one of the worst districts in the state. I moved away from there and I come back to District Two for my kids' education. That boy, I tell y'all the truth, I, I come from a really big family, and I'm the only man in my family that's never been in prison. So it was really to me, up to me to say, this is where it stops. And that boy was headed down that same road regardless, despite my efforts rather. Y'all putting him at the academy, he's got more one-on-one attention now. I have no doubt, I know it's more expensive to teach a kid at the academy. At high school, you might have 30 kids for one teacher, at the academy, you might have five. But I have no doubt with that boy right there, y'all saved a life. We done lost so many people in my family to drugs or violence. Y'all, as I said, I have no doubt that y'all saved that life. Miss Anderson, you crawled even like you was his mama, and I really appreciated that. Sometimes these kids need to see that other people care about them besides their parents. And when you just pat somebody on the back when they need you to pat them on the butt instead, you're doing them a disservice. So I really appreciate that firmness with him. I feel like that opened his eyes, he's even told me, Daddy, I've seen that somebody else cares. And, and he's actually a really, really sweet kid, he really, he's right over there. He's a very sweet young man. But y'all gave him-
Let me hear from you real quick, I want, come over here. I remember you now.
Yeah.
Y'all gave him a great opportunity. He's, he's, he's a gift, gifted athlete, but there's other things in life you have to get in order to be able to do that. And, and maybe he'll lose out on that athlete part because of bad choices he's made. That's fine with me, I don't care. He's going to live, he's going to live, I see it now. I got hope in him now. I appreciate y'all giving me that hope and showing me he's going to be okay. I, I, I really believe this is the greatest school district. If I didn't, I wanted to move to this one, I would have moved to a different one. Y'all, just like a while ago, y'all had a team of people trying to see how you can improve. You don't feel like you've met perfection, you're looking to see how you can do even better. And I just wanted to let y'all know how much I appreciate that. And, and, and I don't know if it's okay to say anything about something religious, but y'all kicked me out, but I thank God for all y'all. I do, I thank God.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. For me personally, it's been a long week until I heard you talk tonight. You don't know how much I appreciate it.
That is wonderful.
We're just, we're going to get more super dedicated comments now, so. Mr. Jackson, I'm going to start with you.
All I can say is wow, Mr. Chairman, I tell you, I, that's, you know, that's what makes it all worthwhile.
Yes.
And as I always say, it doesn't matter whether it's one or a thousand and one. Making a difference in somebody's life is really why we do what we do. So, thank you, sir. Most times when people come and give public comments, rarely do they get up and, and share, come back sort of like that, I'll get religious too, like that one leper come back, came back and said, thank you. Rarely do they do that, so thank you very much for that. I had written in my notes, Mr. Chairman, to simply say that academics is my highest priority on this board, and student athletes, in my mind, should happen in, in that order, student first, athlete second. Thank you very much for approving the 8% capital improvement plan. I'm real excited that those schools that need those services are going to get them now. Thank you very much for that. And also, I think the report on, on transancy that included the information on the IEPs and homeless was critically important. I, I would say very quickly, Mr. Chairman, that most folk don't realize that when we talk about homelessness in our district, the number is probably actually even larger than that. Because a lot of kids who live with their grandparents and with their aunts don't consider themselves homeless. So if you fact, and they're not factored into that number. So when you include them and factor them in, our number's even greater than that. For a long, long time in South Carolina, we were ranked number ninth in the nation in the number of kids being raised by their grandparents. So we have a very serious problem and a growing problem that's been growing, not just recently, but over the years. So thank you, Dr. Vickery and others, for the excellent work you're doing. Good job tonight, Mr. Chairman, on a well-run meeting. Thank you very much.
Mr. Jackson, Ms. Anderson?
You know, I'm really speechless. You know, I think everyone that knows me knows that Blythewood Academy is my baby. Because I'm really choked up, because that school has saved so many children from ending up in prison and are dead. And to hear a parent come before us tonight really opens up my heart. I spoke on Saturday to the, I can't even think, but anyway, I was telling them, when intervention program, that when parents, children are referred to Blythewood Academy and they say they don't want their children there because that's where all the bad children are, and my statement is, well then, you have a bad child too, because that's where your child is going. So if you want to label the children, then label your own child. Because that school is, main purpose is to give children a second opportunity in life. And for your son to take advantage of that second opportunity just makes my heart feel wonderful. So just keep preaching the story so people will know that if the children go there and want a second chance, the opportunity is there for them. And I, kudos to my fellow board member, Mr. Jackson, and congratulations, Beth Elliott, Marshall Lynn Franklin, the name I will not attempt to, to name at Ridgeview High School that won the award. Somebody, Obina. Thank you. Congratulations. Did you hear that on the tape? Because I would never attempt to do that. And to round top, congratulations to all, and Lake Carolina. And you guys did an excellent report on all your reports tonight, and I just feel heartfelt. But now I got to brag one time and I'm going to, I'm going to quit. If you guys get a Red Hawk Times, flip it over, and that's my baby right there. That's my son's 17-year-old, Akili, at Ridgewood. And I didn't even know my own child until he told me it was him. But I thought it was very nice paper that you guys put out at, at Red Hawk. So it took just a couple of seconds for me to brag on, on my own child because he too is doing good. If I can get the 15-year-old to do half as well as the 17-year-old is doing, I might have a black strand up here after a while, but I doubt it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And congratulations, I'm sorry, to Monica. Tonight is her anniversary, so we're trying to rush so we can get her out for her first anniversary. Congratulations. Wish you many, many more happy anniversaries to come.
I did want to say one thing to Mr. Smith. I've read, and it's well documented, parents that participate in their children's education, the children do well. So you're, you're part of the solution. So thank you so much for caring and bringing it to our attention, and he'll continue to do well as long as you, as you stay right with him. Want to say congratulations to the National Board Certified Teachers and then the renewals as well. Part of the reason that we're continuing to excel and do well is we have teachers that take the time and the effort to continue their education. So it makes me extremely proud and proud that we're number one in the state now. So that's no small accomplishment. Great report on our transient population. I'm glad we're talking about it and dealing with it, and I feel like you all are all doing the right thing. So I know it's a growing problem, but feel real good about what we're doing. Thank you. I'm very interested in, you know, having this dialogue about the dress policy. I think that's an important, something if we haven't talked about it in 15 years, we certainly need to. Just because fashion is out of control, it doesn't mean that we need to be. You know, it's just, it, it's good to have dialogue, and I've talked to other parents recently about it, and they, everybody has an opinion. So we'll see. Thank you.
So, Mr. Jackson?
I'd like to say congratulations to the National Board Certified Teachers and the renewals. Great job on that. Also to the parent, thank you for what you've done with your child. Mr. Perry Mills, thank you for doing a great job at Blythewood Academy. And for the young man, congratulations, and I know you can do well when you return back to your home school. And also, I'd like to say thank you to all the administrators that I see here tonight, and I'm going to encourage you to continue to come to more board meetings.
Mr. Manny?
I just want to echo the sentiments of all my other board members. Congratulations to all the folks for the great things you're doing. The, the comment you made about costing more to educate students at Blythewood Academy and our Family Services Program, it's a lot cheaper than incarceration. But beyond the cost of it, just the, the personal touch, that your story and so many others who have been through Blythewood Academy and Anna Boyd and our Family Services Program is just phenomenal. And I truly think we lead the state, maybe the country, with the services that we provide, that it's not just a dumping ground per se, but it's actually a fantastic opportunity for students to turn around. I tell you, I've heard so many great stories and so many leadership opportunities coming out of there. I may choose that as a first option for my daughter when she gets to high school. Send her through there with all the extra services and everything that she gets there, so. So thank you very much.
Dr. Brochu?
Well, I as well want to congratulate National Board Certified Teachers with an outstanding accomplishment that continues to be for our district and certainly for each and every one of those individual teachers, but more importantly, for the students of our district. I want to thank WLTX TV for noticing the great work of our teachers. Five of our teachers have recently received the station's Golden Apple Award, and we're very, very proud of them. We've had 350 Richland Two retirees that came back together just last week at our annual retirees luncheon. I think it was a record crowd, if I'm not mistaken. They had a lovely meal and great student entertainment, but most importantly, they had an opportunity to catch up with each other. And we heard great conversations and wonderful stories being told throughout the room the entire two hours. We recently had our first Ultimate Chop Competition Finals. They were held at Westwood High School. Our principal, Ralph Schmidt, served as the emcee, and it was a fabulous occasion. We had two of our board members that took a part in the judging, Dr. Fleming and Ms. Brill, and I think that they had a, a pretty darn good time. And our finalists were, did an outstanding job, and it was a teaching assistant from North Springs Elementary School, Susanna Hallbrook, who won the top prize this year. We also had many students in our district participate in job shadowing February 1st. It's an opportunity for our students to really see a number of careers outside of, of school. They shadowed parents and, and others. I, I understand some served in the capacity of shadowing meteorologists and even a crime scene investigator. And finally, I was personally touched by the opportunity to, to attend National Signing Day at Ridgeview High School, and I know we had signing day ceremonies all over the district Wednesday morning as a number of our student athletes, and I agree with you, Mr. Jackson, student needs to be first in terms of student athletes. And I will say, a number of our students have garnered fabulous scholarships and opportunities to participate at the next level, and that certainly brings great pride to each and every one of us. So with that, thank you.
Yeah, one of the best things I've ever done in a district is be a judge at the, at the Ultimate Chop Competition. Six entrees and six desserts. It was great. I mean, but it was great. I mean, I could not believe what talent we have.
The food was delicious.
It was, I mean, and Suzanne, she did, she did a great job. She was, she did-
We had judges that knew more than we did. There, there were better ju, was Eric Cervantes?
Yeah, we had the Chop winner of last year-
He came from Texas.
He was a judge from Texas.
He was wonderful.
He worked for the Sedesco, so.
And then the chef from USC, he was there, and then the gentleman that's head of food services with Department of Education, Beden Bow, so there were people that knew more than I did.
You're right.
Thankfully.
About judging, anyway, I don't, um, but, um, a teacher in the classroom, I, I mean, as long as I've been on this board, I've, I've heard there's nothing more important, and you know that's never changed, never has changed. Now, the teacher may change a little bit about how they do things and how they get involved with their students, and that has happened, but you still have to have the best teacher we can possibly have. I think the National Board, while it's not the end-all to everything, it is definitely something that's, that's achievable, and it's something that our, you know, teachers can strive for, and I was very impressed with, with the lady that says she tried twice and missed it by one point. I've known teachers who tried twice and they would not go for the third time. I mean, and she went for the third time, and, and she was not gonna let a, let one point stand between her and achieving a goal she wanted to. I was very impressed with that. And again, I'll just, I'll just, I'll just give kudos to Perry and his group at Blythewood Academy, tough love, it'll, you can't, there's no substitute for it. You know, you can't save everybody, but dag gum, you can sure try to do it, and he does, and that's what, and I'm proud of him for that and his staff out there. Any other comments from, um, members? Thank you. Okay, uh, we are going to recess and have a very short executive, second executive session. Uh, does anybody want to make a motion to go into this executive session? You really don't have to name everything, just-
So move.
Okay?
Second.
Okay, all who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.